Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's special council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Correct. No, I have to do that. Public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated a desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council from the podium for stating their name and address. The council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anybody from the public wish to address the council? Final call? Anyone from the public? We'll go on to the next. We'll welcome you tonight. Thank you so much. I'm very excited about this presentation. I got some materials before, and I think it's going to be great. But I would just like to take this moment to thank you all for the boards and the commissions and the committees that you were on. You have no idea how much we rely on the hard work that you do, and we know that you do it voluntarily. And so, we are very grateful for what you do. And I'm very interested in tonight's presentation. So, without anything further, we'll go on to Steve Bargel on the purpose of the meeting.
Thank you. And I want to echo what the mayor just said. It's great to see so many of you here tonight, and we really thank you for all you do, all the volunteer time you give on these committees, commissions, and boards. And it speaks so well of those of you in attendance here that you would take time out of your night this evening to come here and hear this topic. We really appreciate it. The purpose of this meeting came out of some discussions a few months ago where we realized that we seem to go over a lot of the same topics, things like ethics and conflict of interest and open meetings issues. And we talked about having a session for council members to hear about some of this and get familiar with, you know, when are they supposed to step aside when they have a potential conflict? My brother works for this company or whatever it is. But out of those conversations came the idea that it's not just council members. It could be committee members, too, facing similar things when you vote, when you participate in discussions. You know, do I have a conflict? Ethically, I know something. Am I supposed to share it? Am I supposed to not share it? And in open meetings, some of you go into closed sessions in your meetings. How does that work? What's the expectation of you in those settings with confidentiality? So, we thought it'd be good to invite you to be here as well. We're pleased to have Ed Miller here from UW-Stevens Point. He's going to do a presentation on these topics that you probably see in advertised. And he is going to take questions as we go. So, raise your hand. We are not going to ask you to come to the podium. And for the purposes of cable TV, when you speak, it won't be audible on the TV program. So, what will happen is Mr. Miller will then rephrase as best he can your question and then try to address it. But don't wait until the end. Raise your hand if there's anything that seems puzzling or that you have a question on, and we'll deal with it then. We want to have this be interactive. So, without further ado, as they say, I'd like to invite Mr. Miller up here. Thank you so much for taking time to come over and be with us tonight. And we're very excited about this presentation.
Thank you. I was glad to be here. I put together this presentation based upon what I've done to several other central Wisconsin governments. Wausau, I've done a number of these in Wisconsin Rapids. And I thought it would be particularly interesting to you. It's happy to come over here for the presentation rather than going into your other part of town, which is the clinic. So, although I did teach a course here a couple of years ago, a number of years ago, in Marshfield Center. We did a course. I'm also happy to be here because of your attorney, who was my student a number of years ago. And he took several courses from me at UW-Stevens Point, one of which was Legislative Process, and which helps certainly with you. And the only trouble was when he took Legislative Process, it was so long ago, there was only one House of Congress. But we now have to. We now have to. Maybe, although one doesn't do anything. But, okay. So, I'm going to talk a little about government meetings in Wisconsin. A lot of this you probably know. And one of the things I do want to talk about is parliamentary procedure, the importance of parliamentary procedure. It is important. Now, in my former life, which was a long time ago, or as one of your physicians at Marshfield told me the other day, he said, "You're on the back nine." And I wasn't smart enough. Somebody said to me, "You should have said, 'But it's only the first round.'" But nonetheless, in my former life, I did work in the Congress. I worked for the Committee on Energy and Commerce. I was not their parliamentary, but I was a policy analyst for them. And parliamentary procedure became important for them and for the committee itself, and certainly for the chamber. I didn't work for the chamber particularly, but I watched. Particularly for the committee. And it's important for all kinds of things. I am now also, strangely enough, the parliamentarian for the Wisconsin Intercollegiate Athletic Association, which is strange. I thought maybe they would give me a referee's outfit, but no, I didn't get that. But even for them, when they meet, they have all kinds of resolutions and all, and there's all kinds of conflicts. And there's 600 or 700 people who come to their state, their yearly state meeting. And so, it becomes very important. And so, why is it important? And so, I've listed a few things. One is, the obvious one is the orderly conduct of meetings. So, meetings are orderly, are conducted orderly, even if there's tremendous conflict, even if there's different points of view and the like. But so, it can be done in an orderly fashion. We typically do do that in this country, interestingly enough, even when you look at Congress or, you know, the House. Or, once in a while, it gets a little unorganized, especially the time that Dave Obi punched out another member. But that was not in the rulebook. That wasn't in the rulebook. But the idea is that those meetings are particularly orderly. But if you watch on C-SPAN, sometimes they will show some other parliament. Well, British Parliament is pretty orderly. Actually, I was watching some of that this morning in Brexit. But if you look at some of the other parliaments in Korea, in Japan, they start throwing things at one another, and it becomes a very disorganized thing. So, the idea here is to conduct it as an orderly meeting. It's also the focused decisions making on the relevant issues so that you don't stray. You don't start talking about one issue, and then you begin to pick up some other issue. You make sure all points of view are considered. You certainly protect minority rights. That's a very important thing of parliamentary procedure. And coming to a decision in a reasonable amount of time that it doesn't go on and on and on, that you have a reasonable amount of time. Now, sometimes, unfortunately, what can happen is people can use parliamentary strategy to really cut off debate before it begins. And that's happening in Congress, for example. That did not happen years ago. That didn't happen years ago. But many of you are familiar with filibuster in the Senate, that you can fill. It's changed in the nature. But you can cut off a filibuster. There's a procedure for cutting off a filibuster, and that's called cloture. And cloture dates from the early 20th century. Now, if you remember your history, when cloture was used, like in the Civil Rights Bill, it was after days and sometimes even weeks of debating these particular issues and weeks were, you know, some of the famous civil rights bills, the 57 bill, the 64 bill, and the like. And then you saw cloture votes to cut off. My point is that now, what they're doing is they're using cloture before debates start. And so, it's violating really the idea of reasonable amount of time to debate. And that's a change. But parliamentary procedure is important. Now, in the Congress, it derives from the Jefferson Parliamentary Procedures. And, but most people use what's called Robert's Rules of Order. And by the way, there's not a single Robert's Rules of Order. You have to be a little careful because different books may be slightly different in Robert's Rules. It's not a patented thing. And they're usually mostly the same. But often, in one's, you know, listing for their organization, whatever they want to call it, their charter, it usually lists a specific of Robert's Rule. So, you know what you're talking about. And you know the specific one. So, Robert's Rules was actually created for small groups. So, it was not created for large organizations. But that's the one that is well-recognized. But you should be aware that there's different versions of Robert's Rules. And even in different editions of the same book of Robert's Rules, there may be some changes. Most people never confront those, but there are some that are made. There's not a single Robert Rule. Now, if we go to the typical order of meetings, and you're pretty familiar with this in Wisconsin, that the presiding officer, the chair, the mayor, calls the meeting to order. Some meetings have a flag salute, you know, your Pledge of Allegiance, which you just did. There are some that don't do a Pledge of Allegiance. Congress in the House didn't begin the Pledge of Allegiance until after 9/11. There was not a Pledge of Allegiance. And that was, but that's fine. The question that is raised is not as much about the Pledge of Allegiance, although, as you know, the controversy over the "under God" provision in the Pledge of Allegiance, but is more the prayer. And some organizations do use a prayer. Some city councils use prayers, and some committees use prayers, and zoning boards. I know that was a question that was brought before the Supreme Court. And that is the use of a prayer. And the question then becomes, is that constitutional? And, you know, and then what kind of a prayer that can be used? And the Supreme Court ruled on this. There are several rulings on this. But the one that's most clear is about four years ago, I think, was. And it said that a prayer, you know, for local government was okay as long as it was, as long as the prayer was non-sectarian. And that if you're using a clergy to say prayers, that it rotated among the clergy, that you would have different denominations, different faiths in. But that's been a constitutional issue, is the prayer. Congress does you, you know, if you've watched the Congress on C-SPAN, you'll see both the Senate and the House have a prayer. It's a non-sectarian prayer. And it's actually done by, well, it can be done by a number of people. But there is a minister or clergy who is employed by the House, Senate. Sometimes, they bring in visiting clergy. But the point is that a prayer is okay. I was just told the story that they do use a prayer in the Portage County, County Government, Portage County Board. A prayer is used. And they rotate among the members who has the duty to say the prayer. And the one member was telling me, actually, yesterday, he was saying, "A lot of the members come in, and you see them opening their packets when they walk in, that they really haven't studied the material." So, this one guy comes in, and he opens his packet, and he notices that he is assigned the prayer for that day, but he hadn't thought about it. So, he was pretty smart. And he got up and said, "Ladies and gentlemen, let's have a moment of prayer." And so, that took care of his prayer. He didn't think of what the prayer was going to be. Then, there's the approval of the minutes of the prior meeting. You actually don't need to vote on this. There's a big issue. Everybody's got to vote on the minutes. Well, you don't. Usually, normally, you say, "Are there any changes to the minutes?" If none, they stand approved. Essentially unanimous consent. You can vote on it, but usually, they're not voting. You can see the Congress, they don't vote on the minutes, but it tends to be a common thing. Then, in Wisconsin, we typically have this. It's not an all-state. But in Wisconsin, we have, and this was mentioned just a couple of minutes ago, that individuals can address the committee or the board. And individuals who want to address the committee or the board then come up and address the board. And usually, there's a time limit. There's typically a time limit in terms of the total time for addressing the board. And some boards do have a, some boards have a very strong time limit for each individual, that you've only got two minutes or something like that. Now, this has gotten to be controversial in a number of boards and city governments in Wisconsin because there's certain people who, they who come all the time and want to address any item, even those items that are not before the board. And so, there's been fights in a number of cities over whether they could suppress that individual who could say, "Look, you can speak once a month" or something like that. Or, "You have to speak to an issue that is on the agenda," which is another thing that they have done. But it has been a controversy, a recent controversy in a number of boards and city councils mainly that I'm familiar with in Wisconsin. Then, there's committee reports. The committees give a report or report a bill or a resolution. There's a discussion of amendments. And then, there's the voting on the bills and resolutions. I'm going to talk about amendments in a sec. Then, there's any new business before the board, after the committee reports, any new business. The new business has to be on the agenda. That's been, that is a particular issue. In other words, it's got to be noticed. This is the whole thing. So, it's got to be noticed so the public knows that somebody can't bring up something that it's then voted on at that time without telling the public within 24 hours that it was going to be taken up. And this is a strong requirement in Wisconsin. And that's the notice requirement. And in, I think I've got it later, but in the notice requirement, it's got to be clear what is going to be voted on. And so, there's been issues that have been brought to the courts in which what was written in the agenda was very, very difficult to figure out exactly the item that was going to be voted on. It was not clear. Even though it was on the agenda, it was there 24 hours before, but it was not, it was not clear. This has also come up with regard to the state legislation. And this was where Republicans have pushed through items without informing the Democrats. And the Democrats have said, "Well, the notice requirement." And that's been an issue that has been fought over notice, that they were not notified about the item. They were not aware that these items were being brought. And when the Republicans brought these items, this was part of, if you remember, a couple of years ago, where they came in and they said, "Shame, shame, shame." That was on TV. But that's one of the reasons that they were saying that because they were not aware that these items were going to be voted on. And the question was where it was going to be noticed as well. So, that's an important item. Then, there's announcements. And then, adjournment, just in terms of general meeting category. Now, in terms of the agenda of meeting, now, this is I've been asked about. Who determines the agenda of the meeting? And I, and, I mean, not here I wasn't asked, but some other places they asked me to look at the agenda of the meeting. The agenda of many meetings, by the way, and especially in Wisconsin, but other places, too, are really determined by the professional staff. Now, the professional staff doesn't have the authority to do this in that way, but often, the governing, the elected officials often work with the professional staff to come up with the agenda of the meeting. But technically, the agenda of the meeting is determined by the presiding officer. And so, the presiding officer, whether it's the mayor or whether it's the committee chair, determines the agenda. Now, members can often request items to be put on the agenda, be added to the agenda. But a member doesn't have a right to have that item on the agenda. It's typically the committee chair or the mayor in terms of the council. Again, it's got to be 24-hour notice so that there's still the notice requirement there so that the public knows that it was there, that it was going to be talked about. In other words, you can't have something that says, "New business," and then something come up being enacted because how would you know that this was going to be enacted under new business? And so, this has been an issue that not only the courts have considered, but it's in, there's a good document on open meeting law. But there's a good document that is put out by the Attorney General. And it's on, they update it. It's on the website of the Attorney General. And over the years, it's been updated. It's got case citations and the like. And it's got examples of various items that have come up. It's a good source to look to for Wisconsin. But this talks about that as well and the need for notes and telling people. Any questions? I mean, you have questions? Let me know. Go ahead. You could probably decide it at the time of the meeting. I don't know anything. I may be wrong, but I don't know anything that would preclude that. But it would be best if it was voted on. It was approved by the board, that this would be two minutes or each one. But the presiding officer may say, "Each person has two minutes." But I don't know of something that would preclude that because individuals, as far as I know with the law, individuals do not have a right to address the council. There's, like, or a board. There's no right to that. And so, you know, you can certainly, you know, interact with them by writing them a letter or whatever. But the actual getting up and physically addressing the board, I don't believe is in that. But it's common practice to do that. So, since it isn't in the statute, as far as I'm aware, then, you know, then the council, I mean, excuse me, then the committee can make its own judgment. But normally, there's a particular procedure that's followed. So, you know, it's not willy-nilly. It's usually, they voted a particular procedure, and they followed it. And it's usually voted on. It's not in a same ordinance, but it's voted. Okay? Yep?
One is about the application. What could the council, the application direction of public source? Counsel, what determines what's considered added?
What is the, what is considered, what is considered by the city council as the source of notice? So, I mean, you can notice other places, too. So, we used to say that notice had to be in a first-class newspaper. But since we don't have any first-class newspapers anymore. But, little editorial bit, you know. But anyway, but the point is that some source that you know to go to to see all the meetings.
The committee being.
It's usually, actually, it's usually probably in an ordinance, probably in an ordinance that we're going to publish everything through this source. Now, the state publishes in, they've selected the so-called first-class meeting, you know, meeting. And that, right now, is the State Journal. It used to be Milwaukee Journal-Sun. So, all of that is noticed. It may be noticed other places, but all of that is noticed, noticed there through the State, through the State Journal.
The second question from the members request an item. How, if they can request an agenda item to be added or, like, say, the mayor, you know, on that. What recourse do they have? Of course, that, why?
Well, they can bring it up under new business.
But it has to be 24 hours.
Right. But they can bring it up, but it may not be voted on then. So, in other words, it may be brought up as new business as this, as a future agenda item. The future agenda item. But basically, the mayor controls. You know, so it's difficult to do. Usually, you go through, and it would then be recorded at a. So, the mayor has a strong control in Wisconsin. Now, I don't know how you set it up here, but there were a number of books that said Wisconsin had a weak mayor form of government. And I actually found where that came from. But it's not true that Wisconsin generally has a strong mayor. For example, we talk about separation of power. Well, we don't have it, except in Milwaukee. In Milwaukee, the mayor does not chair the council. But in every other city, as far as I'm aware, the mayor chairs the council. And in a number of cities, the mayor also appoints the members of the, and this was a fight in Stevens Point just this year. And that is, the mayor appoints the committee. And so, by having the executive being able to appoint the committees, you have general control. You have strong control because you can obviously appoint people who would agree with your point of view, let's say, to Committee A, and refer all the important matters to Committee A or something like that, or finance, which is the committee. And so, you know, some cities have determined that the mayor wouldn't do that, that the council may appoint their own. But in the lion's share of committees are appointed by the mayor in Wisconsin. That tends to be the situation.
And if I could just add for the people in the audience here, I think many of our committees, maybe most of them, have an item near the end of the agenda that says, "Suggested items for future agendas." If you don't, you might want to consider it. That's an opportunity for any member of that body to say, "I'd like to put on the next agenda or future agenda the following item." It's a good place for the members of that body to know that they can request something be inserted in the future.
Right. That's a good procedure. Now, any other? Now, one interesting question is amendments. Now, I'm not going to go through details of this except this becomes a parliamentary strategy of when amendments are to be offered. And the, and what I've listed here, just quickly, I'm not going to, as they say, I'm not going to go through the detail of it necessarily, but these are the order. So, if you have a bill, a next thing to the bill or ordinance is an amendment. Then, there's an amendment to the amendment. The next thing is a substitute, and then, an amendment to the substitute. That's the order. And you cannot have any other. And this is referring to as filling the tree. Called filling the tree. So, I don't know how much it's used in local government as a strategy, probably not. But in Congress, they have used it to block any further amendment by what's called filling the tree. But the interesting thing is the order in which they're voted on because what I've done here is simply numbered them, which are in the order in which, if you have all of these, in the order in which they're voted on. And so, it becomes very, very important because, for example, some people will not offer an item as an amendment until an amendment has been offered. So, they could offer, they could then offer it as a substitute. Why? Because the substitute is voted on first. And if the substitute passes, And if the substitute passes, you never get to the original amendment. And so this is, this is the, the, the strategy. Very strategic and important. And when I worked over there, as I say, I wasn't the parliamentarian. But on the committee that I worked for, the, the only, the only instance, at least I remember, that they called the parliamentarian of Congress. And they asked the parliamentarian some kind, some question had to do with the order of amendments in the committee. Because that was critical in terms of determining what it is. And because it is so critical, the, the House of Representatives has adopted sometimes certain procedures to avoid this situation. And one is called King of the Hill. And King of the Hill would allow a member to vote on both the substitute and the amendment. And the one that gets the most wins. And the reason for that is, I'll just give you an example. Let's say I would vote for the amendment, but I wouldn't vote for the substitute. I didn't like the substitute, but I liked the original amendment. And so what I then do is I vote against the substitute. But let, let's say it's gun control. And I'm in favor of gun control, let's say. And I, and, and this is the gun control substitute. I voted against it. I voted against it. Because I wanted the amendment, but the substitute wins. Then in the next election, my opponent comes out and said, look, you voted against gun control with everybody being killed or whatever. You know, the point is that it becomes a very strategic situation. Because you could be recorded as something that's not, not your, your view. So, you know, not going into detail of this, but the point is that this gets to be the most difficult parliamentary issue that comes up in, in various parliaments. Okay. So then there's the reconsideration of a vote. Can you reconsider a vote? Well, that's interesting. It's got to be somebody on the prevailing side, we know that. And so sometimes somebody will vote on the prevailing side, even if, or the side that will win, even if they're against it. Even if they're against it, or will change their vote. You know, it, it, you know, before the vote is locked down, they will change their vote so they are on the prevailing side, and they then can offer a reconsideration. And so you can reconsider, anyone, anyone can, who's on the prevailing side, can ask for the reconsideration of a bill. Now, the question is how, when can this be done? And the answer is, it depends on your procedures. In terms of Robert's rule, it's the same day. But it doesn't have to be the same day in, in, in all one. I remember one in particularly in the Maryland Legislature, going back a long time. I did my dissertation on executive legislative relations in Maryland. So it was in the Maryland Legislature where they reconsidered a bill two weeks later. It was two weeks later. They had nothing in their rules that prevented that. And so what happens is that, that you leave a possible reconsideration open if you don't have the one-day rule. If you don't have the one-day rule. So, so what happens in Congress? What happens in Congress? If you watch it on C-SPAN, which I'm sure you're all glued to. But, anyway. But, but, it's great, C-SPAN is great. But anyway, you watch it on C-SPAN, the House, particularly on C-SPAN. And then they have the vote. And the vote's over, and the bill, you know, let's say passes in, in a vote. And then you hear a whole bunch of noise, and all of a sudden, somebody gets, you, you probably don't even hear them. But somebody will get up and say, I move to reconsider the, the bill that just passed. And have it laid on the table. In other words, table, the reconsideration. Why do they do this? They do this to prevent a future reconsideration. Because you can only have one reconsideration. And that is to plug that reconsideration. So that, so, so that hole was plugged. Without doing that, somebody could come up in Congress two or three days later and reconsider that, reconsider that bill. And so that's why somebody does this in, it's just simply procedure, you have to listen. If you listen after the bill passed, somebody will do it. Usually everybody's talking and whatever, and somebody will get up and, and ask for it to be reconsidered and have that laid on the table, meaning indefinitely postponed. But that prevents a future reconsideration of that. Okay. So let's take a look at some things specific, specific to, oh wow, I just put this in there. Then specific to Wisconsin. But non-debatable motions, motions since it mentioned debate, fix the time of adjournment, adjourning. The previous question motion is non-debatable. So if somebody wants to cut off debate, they can move the previous question. That is non-debatable. Moving the previous question. And then there has to be a vote. And the previous question, there has to be a two-thirds vote to cut off debate. And so anybody can move the previous question. You say, oh, it's going on and on and on. I want to cut off debate. It's move the previous question. It's like cutting off a filibuster, the similar thing that, that is in, that is in, in the Senate. Except you can make it on the floor. The one that's offered in the Senate, it's got to be offered before. There's got to be 16 sponsors and, and, and the like. It's a little bit more difficult. But the ones in the committee, or a committee, if you're, it goes on and on. And this happened in the faculty senate. Not infrequently, when there was a particular important issue before the faculty senate, like parking. That somebody will get up and move the previous question to cut off the debate. Then you will vote on it. If it dies, then you just go on, on, on the debate. Then there's objections to consideration of a question, that it shouldn't be considered, that it's out of order, or most, motion to postpone debates. But none of those are debatable. Now, if we turn to the Wisconsin, I said, open meeting law. The open meeting law is central to Wisconsin. Wisconsin has a very strong open meeting law. All meetings are open in Wisconsin. All meetings are open. There's a couple exceptions, and I've listed the exceptions here. And if you close, move to close a meeting, you have to cite the exception. You have to cite the exception. And that is very, very important. And this has been the subject of litigation in a number of communities in Wisconsin. And whether there was a violation of the open, open meeting law. And, and there's very few areas that, that are accepted. For example, the one, I've, I've listed a number of them. These are the ones that are listed in the statute. I think that may be all that are listed in the statute. And, and, and you can close a meeting. Some of the more, more common ones is a personnel matter. You can close a meeting if there's a personnel matter issue. You know, you're, you're talking about the, well, there was one in another community having, talking about the city manager. And you could close the meeting to discuss the city manager. You don't even have to mention the name of the person. You don't say, I'm closing the meeting to, to discuss so-and-so. But, but, but personnel matter. Confer, conferring with legal counsel is an interesting one. Because that's been a slippery issue. And so the idea of conferring with legal counsel is on a legal issue or a case that's coming up, or a case before the, you know, before, you know, before the government, or, or something like this. Not just that the, and this has been used recently, where the council is present, and, and they're discussing some issue, and they're saying, since the council is present, it, it's discussing it with the council. And therefore is, is exempt from the open meeting law. That's not true. I mean, there's a couple cases on that. That, that it says conferring with legal counsel, but it's on what? Is on what? It's got to be, well, a legal issue that you would close, close the meeting, not just simply the council is, is present. And, and, well, anyway, these are the ones that are listed. You can see their list here, I think this will be available to you. And financial information related is, is, is one thing. Matters where a business would be affected, a particular business would be affected, and discussing it in public could adversely affect the business I mentioned, I mentioned here. Buying property often, you know, to turn, concerning the price, for example, buying property can be a close. But when you close a meeting, you say, I, you have to move, well, one is in the notice. There's got to be a notice that the meeting is going to be closed. So it's got to be in the note. Second is that you've got to, you've got to cite the statute. So that's a common thing, people, and they read it often. That I'm closing the meeting under this statute, and they must give the basis. And so that's always done. At every meeting I've ever been in that's been closed, you cite the, you cite, you particularly cite the statute, which is 1923. But anyway, so you can close meetings. But meetings are often not closed in Wisconsin because of the limited number of situations. As they say, where it's often closed is buying property, personnel matter. There's another area that, that it's closed and, and, and the like. But, but conferring with attorney over some, some legal matter. But most meetings are presumed to be open in Wisconsin. The state legislature does not follow the open meeting law exactly. They have, they have exempt, exception to the open meeting law. One most notably is the caucuses. That, that the Democratic Caucus and the Republican Caucus, when they meet, and they may decide the matter, especially if they're in the majority, they may, that may be the decision on the matter. They come out and the minority can't, can't defeat them. And all the discussion has occurred in the caucus, that's all secret in Wisconsin. That does not have to be an open meeting. Well, that's an, an exception to that. And there has been attempts recently to narrow the open meeting law. And they generally be unsuccessful because of the press. That the press has found out about this, and they've made a big deal of this, and they haven't gone through. But anyway, the open, open meeting law is, is important. And the other thing is, if you go into a closed meeting, you can't go back into an open meeting unless you've noticed. In other words, in the notice, you would say, we, we're going to go into a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter. Then we're going to go back into an open meeting. If you go into the closed meeting, you discuss the personnel matter, and you haven't told the public that you can go into then in a closed meeting, you can't. You can't do that. I mean, open meeting. You cannot do that. You have to wait 12 hours. You have to wait 12 hours. So, so you, but if you have told people, you can do that. And individuals who participate in an illegal closed meeting are subject to fines for each violation. So that's an individual viola, individual payment. That's not, the government can't pay that for you. That has to be, that's paid out of your individual pockets if you illegally attend, or, or attend an illegal closed, closed meeting in that, in that area. And this includes what's, what's called a walking, a walking majority. And so a walking majority would be that, for example, if somebody's, you know, who's, let's say, a couple people in the council talked to a couple other people, but they're not a majority. Not in a meeting, but outside a meeting. But they talked to a couple other people. Then they talked to some other people. Or either talked to them by phone, in person, or in the computer, either way, anyway. But they talked to some other people. None of the ones are a majority. But if it's called a walking majority, if you put them all together, if that's a majority, that's a violation of the open meeting law. That's a violation of the open meeting law. And so another instance would be that is not uncommon in Wisconsin. And that is you have a council meeting. And after the council meeting, since it's Wisconsin, a number of the members go to a bar. They, they stop at a bar, and, you know, and in the bar, you know, after the meeting, they, of course, they just had these issues, they start talking about the issue. They start talking about the issue. Oh, what about this issue we considered, whatever? That is a violation of the open meeting law. That is a violation of the open meeting law. And people, the district attorney is the one who prosecutes this. People have gone to the district attorney about this. And it's very hard to prove you didn't discuss this matter. You did not discuss this matter. And so, you know, that, 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 that is, that is an issue. So we, we, we had a problem in our department. I won't specify the problem. But we had a problem in our department over a personnel issue. And unfortunately, the department is small. So in this particular case, since the only tenured members voted on the issue, three constituted a majority. Three people constituted a majority. And so I remember another person in the department, who had been in the department, who was retired. We were told he had a heart attack. And that, and they had taken him to the hospital. And so three of us, you know, got together, oh, we got to go to the hospital and see him. And we got in the car to go to the hospital. On the way to the hospital, I was thinking, we're violating the open meeting law. We are a majority. How could we prove that we were not, if somebody brought it up? How could we prove we were not discussing that issue, which was before the department in that car on the way to the hospital? And so you can get into these, these difficult situations. And a common one is like a meeting after the meeting. Not, not uncommon in, in that, that way. So you have to be careful, open meeting. Electronics are very difficult. And so one of the aspects of electronics that has been, been considered in the open meeting has been email. And where you, and there's other ways of, of doing it, but, but where, where email, you begin emailing people back and forth, and that becomes a discussion, and it's a violation of the open meeting. And so I was talking in, in here, and some people were talking about cell phones. And, you know, what's, this can be a problem. Because in cell phones, I mean, text on self, you can email on cell phones, but you can also text on cellphone. And so if you're in the meeting, and some people are texting each other back and forth, the fact is, that could be a violation of the open meeting law. Because if I'm there as the audience, I'm not privy to what they're saying. And that's why this text message thing gets to be a problem. Gets to be a problem. So some places are saying that you can't use text messages or use, use phone. You, you cannot use text messages or, or phone. My wife, if that, if she were a member of a board and had to do that, she would have to have a prescription for a very strong drug. Because there's, there's something there, and she's tied to the phone. Tied to the phone, even though, you know, she's not 22. But she's still tied to the phone. She's on the back nine with. We're both on the back nine. Although my daughter, I think, hopes that I go first. But anyway. Nonetheless, but the, but electronics become, become an issue because electronics can be ways of skirting the open meeting law. And they didn't have that back in Greek, Greek times. But we now, we now have this. And open meeting law is very strong in Wisconsin. Other places, it's, it's, it's not as strong. As I say, the, some of the guides to both open records and open meeting laws, you can look at the Attorney General. I mean, look in individual cases, but you can look at the, the Attorney General has put together that nice pamphlet or manual on it, which he quotes cases, cites cases in there and gives some of the instances of those particular cases. There have been instances that tried to get around the, they say, in Wisconsin. The other thing is having to do with meetings, as I mentioned all this, is my, all meetings must be announced 24 hours. Intention to go into a closed meeting. Oh, we didn't go to. Intention to go into, into a closed meeting and to go back into an open, I already mentioned it. But this is, but it's, it's important to make sure it's noticed, as, as, that, that it's recalled, that it's called. And this is sort of a summary of this, it's a little small up there. But it's very, it's very, you've got to be very careful about this. Now, one of the things that they need to be noticed is in paper. See, that becomes, has become an issue. And I mentioned it at the bottom here. This has become an issue. And the question is, well, things were changed. Can't we notice the meeting outside of a newspaper? Can we notice a meeting, you know, just on social media or something like that? Well, you can't, as far as I'm aware, as that act, you can do it, but it's got to be in somewhere paper. Because everybody doesn't have access to that. And that, and that, and that's the problem. And, and so this is, this is a particular issue. This came up with regard to the, when they passed the, the law. Act 10, when they passed a law that really took away labor union from, from teachers, primary, well, from public employees, except for police. What happened was that the, the person who does the noticing for the state is the Secretary of State. Well, the Secretary of State is Democratic. He's a Democrat. And the, the legislature that passed it and the governor were Republican. And so they wanted it to go into effect immediately. And so he refused. He refused because he said, he refused for two reasons. One reason is that a court case was brought. And the court case enjoined him from, from essentially noticing the law. Just like a meeting, you have to notice a law. And they enjoined him from, from, from publishing that, that particular law. And that, and so the issue would arose is that he said he wouldn't do this. And the law wouldn't go to effect until the law was published. And it had to be published in a newspaper. It had to be published in, in, in the newspaper. And so what they tried to do is the Republicans said, we will notice. If you won't do it, we will do it. And we will publish it, so it goes into effect, we will publish it electronically. And that became a, a big issue. Not only whether he could, they could do that, but the other, and whether he could do that, because the judge had enjoined him from doing this. But the issue was, can you do it electronically? And the answer so far is no, in Wisconsin. And it's gotta be in some paper, paper source in that, in that, in that, in that, uh, in that area. So notices must be in paper sources. And then in this case, it was, uh, a law, which is similar to a notice, uh, that the laws, uh, has been passed and goes into, goes into effect. You just can't have it reported by the press. It's gotta be officially, officially listed. Uh, okay. So moving on a little bit, just a few other things. And, but if the questions, I can answer them. Open media, open records are very important in Wisconsin. They're often requested by the media. Uh, open records, various, various records are reported by the media. Uh, requests for open records can be malicious. I gave the case of Speaker Boss, who's still a speaker. Uh, and he, he was mad at an historian at Madison. And historian, a well-known historian, this guy is really well-known. And a US historian. When the US historians said something, I don't exactly what he said off the top, but he said something that angered Boss. He was not really partisan, but he, Boss was mad. And so what did Boss ask for? He asked for all his email. Not just the emails relating to that item, which there was virtually nothing. But he want, the, uh, Boss wanted all his email. And they, they asked him for all his email. And, and the argument was, well, we can't let you choose and just give us the emails related to this particular item, but it had to be all the email. And that was, that was an issue. Uh, I mean, that's where it was used in that way. Another example of where this occurred, interestingly enough, uh, having again with emails, had to do with after, it was after nine 11. After nine 11, the Wisconsin passed a law that said that every classroom, every school classroom had to say the Pledge of Allegiance once, at least once a week. I thought they did it every day, but once a week. Now, when I went to school, which was a long time ago, I, we not only said the Pledge of Allegiance, we, we, we said the Lord's Prayer and we read the Bible. So that was a long time ago. And this is a public school, by the way, a public school. This is before the cases. These, these are, these, these were before, for the cases. And, and we either, and, and in elementary school, we sang the Star Spangled Banner, uh, or God Save the Queen. Why God Save the Queen? What? No. Our country tis of it is really the same tune as God Save the Queen. Anyway. The point, the, the point was that that was funny. But, but what happened here was that they passed this law once a week. Madison School District refused. It was Madison School District refused. And so what happened was when they refused, you can imagine, members of the school board got tremendous number of emails of people who were arguing for or against it. Most of them were probably, were probably against it. And well, they didn't keep these emails. They were getting just all these emails. Well, there was an open records request for all of their emails. And that got into a really difficult thing, because technically, all those emails should have been preserved and then submitted to, to, I don't remember who had requested those, those emails. And so the point is that, that your records are not only your physical records, but also electronic records, which would include email. They also include text messages. They are, there's been recent cases having to do with text messages. So if your text message, uh, if your text message relates to something, you know, some business, you have to keep those text messages. And there was an attempt, uh, under the surface, by Boss, by the way, uh, coming back to Speaker Boss, to eliminate that requirement for text message. And they tried to do this by the back door. And in fact, is again, the Wisconsin Media Association found out about this. They made a big stink about this and, um, they backed back on that. They actually voted to do that, but then, then they reversed it because of such negative publicity. The bottom line is, it's not only physical paper, uh, or, and emails, but it's also text messages that relate to, um, that relate to, you know, official business. Uh, those text messages. Then you get the problem of your email. And then the question is, well, where do you get your official email? And so lots of people not only have an official account, you know, with the government, I mean, you know, with the city, uh, but they also have their personal account. And they may be interacting, you know, with people on city issues on their personal account, not just their, their official account. That becomes a problem, because all of that is subject to the open records law. And since it's subject to the open records law, even if you have personal items in there, that is subject as well, because you've mixed the item. You've mixed the item, and that becomes a very, very difficult, uh, situation. Uh, think of Hillary Clinton. And that was, that, that was an issue with her and her personal email. So really, city business should only be done on your official one. And if you happen to get a personal thing on your personal, you know, account, email account or something, you should forward it to your official account. Yes. Well, it would be the same as, uh, the, the standard law. What is it? It's seven years? Yeah, I think it, it, it's seven years. It's seven years.
This is a, this is an important point, because the, the council has, you know, gets their email from a city account, but the committee members, I think, generally have their personal email and they get agendas and, and other information sent that way. So they don't, they're not sitting in place, unless I'm wrong, you, you don't have city email accounts. So that poses another twist.
Right, and then, and, yeah. Oh, you could, you, you, you could delete that. Your only thing to relate to business, right? Only thing i- it would relate to business, uh, that you would have to retain. You could think of the same thing as mail that you get. So any mail you get related to a personnel matter or other business has to be retained, but if you get advertisements or something, uh, you, you can delete that. You get, you get into the issue if somebody raises the point that, look, you have deleted this, this, this email, and the fact is that you not only deleted your advertisements, but you've also deleted some official stuff. That gets into an issue. But you, but, but it's the official stuff that needs to be kept. Now, they don't say you have to keep it on the city email, but, but, but it just makes it easier if you has, if you have city email, but you should not delete the other stuff. The one thing you can do, of course, is if you have, uh, a, a, you know, a Gmail account or one of the charter or something like that, uh, account, you can create a, a separate, uh, folder. And you can just, you know, uh, move it to the folder. So everything for city business could be moved to that folder, and that, that becomes easier, uh, to, to look at. But you could be subject, you, you just never know. You just, you just never know. I know the university, for example, uh, one of the things that they have is, um, personnel, where people apply for jobs. Well, you've got to keep that material for at least seven years. And most people say, ah, no. And your notes too. So if I'm taking notes on the various files that, 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 you know, that come in, and then I say, okay, we've selected the person, I've got all these notes, you know, that I've taken on the files and their interviews, I'm gonna toss them, you technically can't. You technically can't. And so you get just tons of stuff you could, you could have, or, or have it electronically. Uh, you, you could have. Now, some people then say, well, nobody's gonna ask for this, whoever asked for this. True. But we did have at least one case, I know they did. This is someone who had applied for a position, didn't get the position, and then requested all this other material. That's the only one I know of at UW Stevens Point. Uh, there may, there, there, there may be other ones, but, but I know of one person that actually had requests, I don't know what department, had requested all this material. This person apparently frequently did this, so he was, yeah.
Uh, just to be clear, so with respect to city, uh, staff and, uh, the council, we have a system that basically keeps your emails and protects it for that purpose. Those of you that are on a committee, as we've discussed, that's not the case. And you are obligated to maintain that documentation. And, um, unlike the university, you'd be surprised at times, if we were facing some type of litigation, the level at which requests for that kind of documentation comes through in the context of litigation, and they can be implicated at the same time under open, open records law. So, um, it, it would, would not be impossible that you'd be asked for some type of very esoteric information that has been received, uh, through email in that context. And then what would happen is, I would relate that to staff saying, hey, we need all these emails. And then you get a request saying, turn up all those emails. And if they're gone, and that would end up being, having to be disclosed in the context of litigation, then that's where you could be looked at as whether you've, you know, failed to maintain the necessary public records because of your position.
And theoretically, theoretically, I'm guessing most of you, the email you get from the city, from the clerk's office or different departments, is largely agendas and minutes and those kind of things. I, I'm guessing you're not seeing much else, uh, that doesn't pertain directly to that meeting. The kind of correspondence, I think, is concerning, back and forth, probably is not part of your world, but that's a good reminder.
I also like to point out, though, that if you do have a system in place, we're getting our communication from somebody on the board. So your emails are already stored with our chain. So if you could technically use your email for that immediate response, not ours personally, we are in that.
Assuming that you have, that that chain is the entire thing, then that's fine. But what you could run into that problem would be that email comes out of here, you got a chain, and then you share that with somebody else, and it's that sharing of that then is additional business. So we'd run into those issues. I, again, you're right, and we, and a lot of times when these requests come, we end up with duplicate of the same email transferring back and forth between people. And, and it be, you know, there might be 50 or 60 of the very same transmission. Um, but it's that lack of one, and, and really, the implication of having to say, oh, you know, we, we missed that, and, and so there's something missing becomes certainly concerning.
Right, and then, and you get to be, it's the Hillary Clinton problem. Because, uh, she, all the emails that came in to her, her personal server, she allegedly had sent to the State Department. And the question is, did she send them all? And that was, that was the question. And she said, well, you know, anything that was not personal, I forwarded as required on the records law, this is the, the, the US records law, to the State Department. Well, that was the question. And then you get into this problem. Other question, yeah. Yes. Reasonable char, it's gotta be reasonable charges. They have to pay for it. And then, and, and I don't know what the charges are, but it's gotta, I, the, the, the cases have said, uh, it's gotta be reasonable charge. So some have tried to discourage this by having very har, you know, large charge. But in, with the emails, it wouldn't be per page as a photocopying page, but it would be the ti, you know, paying a little bit for the time to, to acquire the emails. But that has to be a policy, so you can't decide it in, in the individual cases. Well, the, the, a policy would be established by the government. By the city in this case, by, by the city. And if you think it's not, if you think it's not appropriate, you know, it's too high, for example, they're charging $10 a page, I don't know what these cases were, then you can take it to the court. And there, there has, it was, there was a case like this within the last year. Yeah, they were char, I don't remember what they were charging, I read in the paper, but they were charging a very large amount to, to, for, for these, uh, for these docs. I don't think they were emails, I think they were docs. So, I mean, it just was, they were unreasonable amount, and they were charging to prevent people from, from acquiring the doc. And so you can take it to, to court. But, you know, reasonable charges are usually, and, you know, you may say, what are reasonable charges? You know, sometimes it may be a couple di- in dollars a page, or something like this, $2 a page, or something like this, and you say, well, this doesn't cost $2 a page, but they'll say, wow, somebody's gotta do it. And, 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 and xerox and so forth, that would probably be.
So, so one of the things with that is that, um, the, the, it can't, your cost can't exceed the actual cost of reproducing it, so your copying has gotta be, the co, the charge for the physical copy can't exceed the actual cost that the governmental unit had in producing it. So if you think about pushing a button on a copy machine, you're really talking about that, that, the cost of the paper and the ink. So there, there's kind of a set control over that. And then the statute basically says that, um, there can be a fee for locating documents once the cost of the copies is gonna exceed $50. So there's some statutory provisions that control that specifically.
Okay, I didn't know that. Go ahead.
Um, so in your expert opinion, do you feel that our city board and committee members should have a city assigned email address?
Well, certainly the, the board should, there's no question about that.
Well, we do, we have.
Right, right.
But I'm, I'm talking about to protect our committee.
Or the committees?
That they should have a city.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a bad idea, other than the fact is, if you have a whole bunch of committees that have, you know, that, that, that have non, you know, government people on it, you know, public, you know, people in the committee, it just becomes difficult to do.
Sure, but you, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
You, you had brought up that, you know, an open request, a records request, that they would be required to give out their, even their personal emails.
That's correct.
So that, that could be a really involved process.
Right.
Okay, because if, like, for my business, I'm an online seller, I use that same email address over and over throughout the day, I mean, sometimes 30, 40 times. And if I was communicating, if I were on a board yet, uh, or a committee, communicating that to get all that information out through open's request would take, would be virtually impossible. It would take hours and hours and hours of my time. So.
Right.
My recommendation was that, is that we do assign city email addresses to our committee members to protect them.
Well, you could do that.
And the city itself.
But the other thing is you could put it in a folder, as they say, and then you wouldn't have to go through and look.
Yeah, but who's to say what you put, what you're putting in the folder?
Well, then you, you got an issue.
I mean, this way, when you have a city email address, everything's on there, city-related. It should be easy to pull up and, and to present to open rec, you know, for open records.
Right, right. Right. And that was the issue, one of the issues with Hillary Clinton, not to keep bringing up Hillary. But, uh, but the fact is that they had deleted a whole bunch of her, her emails. And the claim was that her attorneys had deleted all the personal emails, you know, to her daughter and the wedding or whatever it was. And that, that was an issue that, that was raised. Uh, so, but it's a, it would be a decision of the, you know, of the, certainly the city council, yeah. Go ahead. Right. Right. Right, one of the problems is, uh, informing, if you do, you get an email address, is informing people that any business item should be sent to that particular email and not to your, not to your personal email. But that, whether they give you a city email, that would be, uh, you know, a decision, certainly of the city council. But, um, you know, some people, um, will, will have two email addresses themselves. In other words, will have a charter address and a, and a Gmail address, for example. In other words, will have a charter address and a, and a Gmail address, for example. Some people have a lot, yeah. I've got two, I can't keep.
I was saying at the time.
Can't keep them straight.
To the committee who have a agenda discussion other than this.
Absolutely.
I think we're wrapping around the ax.
Yeah, there's, there's these, these issues with the email. I know at the university, for example, you can't use your email if you're, you know, engaged in some kind of business. So a guy in psychology, who I think is also retired, a year ago, but anyway, but a number of us have retired. But the, the fact is, he runs a dog training. He trains a dog and, and personal assistant. These dogs are really bright. But he can't run that business on his university email. So he's got another email that, that, that does that. He just created another, and he's got seven.
Ed, if, just in the interest of time, I was hoping one of the things we can get to a little bit, because I know it affects some of the committee members, I've heard this before, is the issue of ethics and conflict of interest. Because we're a small community and, you know, we have situations where, you know, my brother's involved in this, can I participate in the voter discussion? Could you touch on, on those items with some of the remaining time we have left?
Right. So we have the ethics issue and, and the code of ethics. Now, now, you have a code of ethics, and many cities have, have codes of ethics. And, but they're different. They're not all the same. A lot of them have the similar things. Now, you know, for example, I've listed some of the common ones there. And you can't disclose confidential information. You can't use government equipment for personal use. You can't solicit or accept anything of value to influence an official in doing the job. And you have to avoid conflicts of interest with personal employment or business. And we get to that in, in, in one second here. But the, the point is that these are often common. A good source of that I listed here is the League of Wisconsin Municipality. They have a discussion of this and a list of some of the, the common ones in, in that, in that area. And it, it, it can come up. And one of the reasons it comes up more frequently with cities is that many people who work for cities, or, excuse me, that are on the boards are part-time. They're not full-time. And so, so they have a job. And since they have a job or own a business or something like that, the conflict of interest are more likely to result if, than, than if they were full-time legislators. And, and Congress has even had this particular issue over the years. And so you can't practice law, for example, if you're a member of Congress. But at one time you could. At one time you could. And the most recent one that has come up is, they say, oh, you can't practice law, but you can deliver babies. And so they pushed that you cannot practice medicine. And that, since there were several doctors there that wanted to practice medicine on Saturday evenings or something, that got into a real fight because they wanted to do that. But this, this is a problem. And, and also, if a decision I mentioned here affects a relative, you, you cannot be involved here. And one example that has come up a number of times in central Wisconsin is, somebody's on the school board, but their wife or husband is a teacher. And so the issue comes up is, there are certain issues such as salary. Can you vote on this? And so the issue is, well, you can't vote. That's a conflict of interest issue. But can you be present? And the law does not prohibit you from being present. So there's a discussion of this, this contract that's coming up. It's in closed meeting because it's a personnel, personnel issue. Can the spouse be there? And the answer is technically yes. Technically yes. They cannot vote, but they can be there because they're a member of the board.
Can I just ask you a question about?
Go ahead.
That type of stuff? It seems like there's a lot of, there's a lot of codes and a lot of shoulds and shouldn'ts. But then on the shouldn'ts, there's, there's no teeth. There's no, so you, you bring up something like voting in.
Right.
A spouse or somebody is on this, and so should they be present, should they not? But realistically, there's really no teeth to it if they stay in because they have to make.
They make that decision.
They make that decision.
Right. And so. This came up to the Stevens Point Board, for example, Board of Education. And then, and the, the issue was just, it was in the paper and, but there was no official way to exclude that person.
So that's, that's the difficult part for those of us on council, when, if a situation like that would arise and you know what's taking place, and, and you go to a situation here where you shouldn't, but.
So that brings up the question.
There's no teeth to it.
There's nothing you can do about it unless they vote. Now, if they vote, which is a definite conflict of interest, then there's a $1,000 fine or up to a $1,000 fine.
But who does, who does that $1,000 fine?
District attorney. The, or a district attorney takes it to the court.
So somebody has to actually make a complaint then to?
That's right. So he complains to the district attorney, and the district attorney takes it to the court. That's correct.
Mr. Whittson.
Yeah.
This also, though, goes into discussions. So if, if an individual has a conflict of interest regarding a topic of discussion and therefore is not voting, they also are not participating in any conversation or discussion on that topic. Is that correct?
Well, that's not clear.
So again, you go back to.
I think it's making the, I think the, well, I, I don't believe the statute speaks to that.
So go back to the Stevens Point.
But I remember about the statute, it talks about taking any action.
So that school board member can go in a closed session, can sit there, could even participate and maybe argue a case, but when it comes time to actually vote, they have to not vote.
Right.
That seems a little bit not quite ethical.
Right. That was, that was a situation that occurred.
You have to remember, too, that we here have our own code of ethics. So the professor mentioned that, that, so, so what he's talking about right now primarily is a statute, and the statute prohibits certain types of conflicts, and they're punishable by a fine. Council has its own code of ethics, which applies to members that are officials, applies to city officials, and it applies to our employees, and it's, it differentiates, but, but generally the same concepts apply. So that's there. What the mayor was referring to, I think, is that, that we've had an experience where we've got our own code of ethics and they're being violated. They don't amount to a statutory violation, and the question is, well, there's no teeth in that. The only answer really to that is, is that under Roberts rules, which we have basically by ordinance required ourselves to comply with, the body does have the power to subscribe to a sanction to a member of the body who would violate one of those ethics rules. And, and there, so there is some element of recourse that could be had. It's, it's not the same as, you know, fines and criminal punishment.
But I would think that also it would be in the code of ethics. In other words, the, the violation of it would be in the code of ethics, your own code of ethics, and that would be in city violation as opposed to a state violation.
The, the code of ethics unfortunately is not an ordinance, so it's, it's done in the sense of a policy which, which you would, you know, and so it's a, it's a policy that applies to the body, and the body then would have to administer its own. So that is an option that the city could look.
And one of the things, a couple of our committees have this, Economic Development Board and Park Recreation and Forestry come to mind. At the beginning of the agenda, it says, identify any conflict of interest you have. So if there's something on the agenda where you're going to be not participating in the discussion or voting because it's got to do with, you know, relative or business interest or whatever, that you should be calling that out in advance. I'd like to see that extended to all of our committees ultimately. It's a good way to identify right up front. I don't belong in that particular item being discussed.
Yeah, and this occurs a lot. I mean, Wisconsin Supreme Court, there's been several cases in which the members have had a conflict of interest, at least a perceived conflict of interest, and they have to determine themselves whether they refuse themselves, whether they don't participate. And, and it's up to them. And in a number of cases, people have said, well, you should have, but there's nothing you can do about it. There's not a lot that you can do about that. And that's, 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 that occurs. That occurs. There, but there's certain things in, in, in the statute. So I stuck to the statutes because I didn't, I didn't look at the, your, your code. But one is, you can't accept anything of value. And that becomes a very difficult thing. You cannot accept or receive anything of value. Now, you, you, the, you know, you think of bribe, you know, of something of value. But there's other things too. People give you gifts. You cannot accept those gifts. And so let's say somebody's running a business, and then, and at Christmas time, they're giving out some kind of gift from their business, and you were a member of the city council, you cannot accept those, those, those gifts. And, I mean, this, you may say, well, why would I? Well, that was not the situation years ago. That was not the situation years ago in, in a number of places. For example, where I grew up was Baltimore City, Baltimore. And it was the norms for lawyers to give either money, sometimes money, or whiskey to police. Now, that's, now that was a conflict of interest because the police is bringing it, are bringing in the cases. And so, you know, you know, some people arrested or, or traffic violations and so forth, but they're giving them, they're, so, so I remember the, you know, you have to go back, but I remember there was a memo that said to the police, look, when you're going around the lawyer's offices at Christmas time to get these gifts, don't wear your uniform. That was the way they worked it. But I mean, this was a situation. But Wisconsin is much stronger. And so Wisconsin got to be this situation in which, for example, that legislators can't take anything of value. What if you're invited to a lobbyist's wedding, and there's food at the wedding? Can you accept the food without paying for the food? And that was a situation that occurred a number of years ago that had to be decided in Wisconsin. One that was decided quite clearly was that the, that the, in Wisconsin, the tavernly, every year holds, holds an open house for legislators. And legislators come to this open house, and of course, they have drinks there. Well, they didn't charge for the drink. And that got to be a viol, that was a violation. That was a violation. So then they started charging $5 for coming in. And a case was brought, and they said, look, you know, the, what you're getting is way more than $5, you know, even though you're now charging. So then they had to kick it up, and hardly any legislator showed up. But the fact is that this is a pretty strong law in Wisconsin, in, in that area. But there's other issues, and sometimes they're difficult, especially if you're, if you have a business. And that is, you know, buying, you know, where your business can be affected by the actions of the, you know, the council. And you can't, you can't do this. This is a violation of the Wisconsin ethics, ethics law. So I remember a case in, in Plover, you know, in, in Plover, Wisconsin, and I was the chairman of parks. It was a non-governmental, I was a non-governmental, so I was doing parks, and they wanted me on parks because they wanted me on the planning commission, so you're automatically a chair. But anyway, but in the parks, in the parks, we had various things. You had to haul dirt and stuff like that in the parks. So at the time is, people said to me, oh, have this one guy who was a member of the Plover, you know, the Plover Board, he will do it in his private business. They said, oh, Willie will do it. He's dead, so it doesn't matter. Willie will do it. Well, what do you mean Willie will do? Oh, Willie will give us a good price. Don't worry about it. So we never bid it, and Willie had, had all the jobs. He had a trucking company. Well, that's illegal. And not only did Willie do it, he was a member, by the way, of the, of the, you know, the Plover Board, but Willie happened to be chairman of Public Works. He was chairman of Public Works, so he signed his own stuff. And so, anyway, but Willie was eventually, eventually died. He was crossing the street a little drunk, and the car hit him. The person was also drunk, and it wasn't clear who was drunker. But anyway, but, but that was, that's a case that occurred not that long ago. You know, a neighboring community in, in that area. And so these are, this kind of misconduct in office is, is concern, especially with businesses buying things. Another thing you can't do is, interesting under Wisconsin law, is you cannot be a member, for example, of the city council and then establish a new position in the government. You know, I mean, I mean, a staff position, and have a member of that, that common council serve in that position. You know, resign from the council and then take that position. They cannot do that because it was created while you were on the, on the council. Now, you can serve on non, you know, paid positions, you know, like, somebody on the council can serve on a non-paid board in which they get a per diem. That's okay under Wisconsin law. But they cannot serve on something that was created while they were in the council. That was interesting. It's in, it's in Wisconsin, it's in Wisconsin, it's in Wisconsin law. They can't do that. Now, they can serve on another position. So you can resign from the council, and you can serve as city manager or something like that, that they didn't create when they, they were, they were there. So there are some limitations to that. Okay. So I've been going too long, but let me finish just, and these are some conflicts of interest. You can take, you can take a look at that. These are some prohibitions that are specifically in the law. And so that's the statute, if you want to look. It's 19.59 in, in that, that, but they're, they're pretty obvious. They're pretty obvious. But again, you, many communities or most communities have some kind of conflict of interest that would be local oriented. And, and take a look at the legal, the legal, I mean municipalities, and they have a good discussion of this and the kinds that are, that are included. You know, some are obvious, that are pretty obvious, that, that you cannot bid, for example, if you're a member of the board, you cannot be the bidder for government contract. You cannot bid for the contract, even if you don't participate in that. You know, you say, well, okay, I'm not going to participate. I'm recruits myself, I'm not going to friskate, I'm not even going to come to the meetings, but I am a member of the common council, but I also own this business, I'm going to negotiate for the business. Well, you can't do that in, in, in that. I mean, this is by state statute, and I've got the statute there in here. And here's some of the sale, you can't sell things to employees, for example, and stuff like, from the city, where the city buys it and then sells it to, to an employee. And lastly, I didn't want to, this is a little bit past what we were talking about here, but I've always been, often been asked about roles of the council. Oh, this, no, this, this one is forms of government in Wisconsin, and then the last one is roles of council members. And the forms of government, these are the ones that are in Wisconsin. You can have a full or part-time mayor, which has been in dispute in a number of communities. And so, well, that in association with the second one. Wisconsin could have a city manager. So in Wisconsin, the governments can be any three, of the three basic forms of government. They can be a city manager form of government in which the manager has power to appoint heads of department. There can be a city administrator, which is someone who works with the council or works with, with mayor in particular, as a city administrator, but doesn't have independent power. And then you could actually have a commissioned form of government, which doesn't, no city in Wisconsin has a commissioned form of government, although it's authorized by the law. So what do we have in Wisconsin? We have a lot of full-time and a number of part-time mayors. Many part-time positions have been moved to full-time positions. Between the manager and the city administrator, although we have a number of managers, the largest number of city administrators, not managers, not managers. Although there's some big cities with managers, such as Ashkies, Janesville, and, and the like, that, that actually have managers, where the manager has that power. In Wausau, they voted on that very thing, what, three years ago, I think it was? Three years ago, in which to adopt the manager form of government and change the mayor from full to part-time. And it was all part of the same referendum. And so they, they vote, they voted it down. But it was a tremendous, it was a tremendous fight over, over, over the, the issue. And I was on, actually, Wisconsin Public Radio, and two people, I was supposed to give the neutral side, and there were two people, one for and one against it on each side, I won't mention their names, and they got in a fight with one another, and they got up, and they both walked out in the middle of the meeting. They left me with Wisconsin Public Radio for another hour. Anyway. So, but anyway, and the districting of the council is important, how the council is districting. We find a lot of this in, in issues in Wisconsin, just like gerramandering, and I've been teaching for 130 years, and I haven't gotten one student to pronounce it gerramandering, but it's pronounced, it's properly gerramandering after, after Eldridge Gary was governor. after, after Eldridge Gary was governor of Massachusetts. That's why it's gerrymandering. No one pronounces it. They say Jermaine. But they, there's a lot of that occurs. You think of partisan gerrymandering? That, and, and actually, take a look at the case yesterday. And that was a North Carolina case in which they found on the state constitution, they ruled out a Republican gerrymen in the, on the state constitution. They had done that in Pennsylvania, but they did in North Carolina, shot me, yesterday in, in that area. You think about that partisan, but you're nonpartisan in the city, right? You're not, you're not technically partisan. It goes on. It may go on by party, but it may go on for other things. So in Stevens Point, for example, for years and years and years, they divided the, the residence hall so that they, you could not get a student, member of the council. They divided up all the students. And so they, and so what was their argument is, we want students to influence a large number of districts and have, you know, because we're a big, big entity, getting smaller, but it's another story. But, but, but a big entity in the city. And so they wanted to have, but the fact is, what they did was by the, by looking where the line was drawn, which was before I got there, actually. If you look at where the line was drawn, it went right through the residence hall so that they would not be in one district. But all these things can come up in, 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 in terms of district. And lastly, and some people have talked about, what does the council do? And I just point out, you know, they represent the public. You should be, you're probably familiar with trustee versus delegate, meaning that you do what you think is right or do you just do what your, your constituents think that is right? I remember there was one, I saw it on TV, but anyway, on the news whereby all the council members in Wisconsin Rapids had voted for another bridge, had voted for another bridge. I think it was the second bridge at the time. Anyway, but another bridge. One member did. And so they interviewed them. And they said to them, wow, don't you think Wisconsin Rapids needs another bridge? Oh, yeah, it absolutely needs a bridge. Then why'd you vote against? He says, my constituents were against. So that person was an evident, was obviously a delegate, not a trustee. But that, that goes all the way back, you know, in British issue. But a lot of things that you do is casework. You let, you, you know, people come to you with problems, you know? I have this problem. I need this zoning or, or whatever it is. Or they're not picking up my garbage. Garbage is a big issue. They're not picking up my garbage correctly. Or all kinds of constituent issues. And, and a number of people actually hold meetings with their, with their district where there, you know, people can come in and talk to them about that. Passing ordinances are obviously, but oversight, making sure the administration is acting and, you know, is it working? The law ordinance, is it cost effective? Do changes needed in the ordinance? Or are there corruption that, that's occurring? I mean, these are different reasons for oversight. Oversight's not just, it's just not, you know, you know, like the House and Trump, right at the moment. Of course, they've got their hands full with that. But it's not just that. But it may be looking at a law. It may be saying, look, here's a law, for example, food, food, you know, food share program is called. Is it working? Does it need changing? Not from a partisan necessarily point of view, but do we need to actually change the law? And so there's a lot of this, you know, in cities. You know, is the ordinance working? Is, do we need some change in the ordinance? And this is all part of the job. Not necessarily new laws, but changing existing ones. I took too much. Anyway, a little bit. Question?
Any questions?
Or anything else?
Nope.
We, we are now, you are now a part of UW Stevens Point here. As our, some kind of branch campus, which they're trying to figure out. However, you're, you, I don't know if you're unique or not. But when I taught a couple, the two years, when we had this program where we taught some courses, the two-year centers, and I went to Wausau and they had to give me a parking permit or something to park there. And like Marshfield, the Marshfield campus, there was free parking. I remember that. There was, park wherever you want to. I thought that was it. Question?
All right. Seeing no question. Ed, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Your presentation was very.
Glad to be here.
We do appreciate it.
But if you think of a question and you want me or anything, just email me at EMiller, E-M-I-L-L-E-R, at UWSP.
And then save it as a public record.
And save it for a record, right?
Just kidding.
And we will, TJ, we will, we will get some information out to you on, on the emails. Any suggested items for future agendas?
Nope.
We can't do much in business. All right. We'll be adjourned here in about twenty seconds. I just want to say again, thank you very much for what you do. You spent another night here. I, I think we got some good valuable information. But we really appreciate what you do on the boards, commissions and committees. So thank you very much. We are adjourned.